Everybody, I'd like to get your attention. The reason I scheduled this gathering, uh, the purpose of this gathering is to update the citizens of Adrian about what some of the things that are going on in Adrian to help assist everyone to get through this devastating time in all our lives. We are receiving help from so many sources and continue to get new ones added daily. Many of our sources are contacting us because of the interview that, uh, I did with WMAZ thirteen news. That's what they're telling me. That's how they found out about what's going on in the city of Adrian. And a lot of it is by word of mouth, by people telling other people that we have a real hard time and the storm really hit us hard and things of that nature. We have our sources, it's unbelievable, uh, the different people that have contacted us. And, uh, some of the, I think the farthest one away that I know of, that I can remember is, uh, Taylor, Texas. And that's the church. But we have a lot of churches that are providing meals. We have a lot of churches that are providing all kind of support. Uh, we have a lot of people that are doing the same thing. And it's hard to name by name, but I am keeping a list so that I can send out thank you, uh, cards to everyone because it's important. We need to let people know how much we appreciate them helping us get through this hard time. And, you know, it wouldn't, I couldn't, uh, talk about any of the support that we have in Adrian without talking about how the constant support that we have had from our Adrian Fire Department, our Waymakers Group, and others. We have been accused of not doing anything, but we're working as hard as we can to get the most help we can for the citizens of Adrian. And it's like, we need to get in touch with American Red Cross. It takes a few minutes sometimes to get in touch with them. They have hard to do. You have to go through a whole lot of hoops, but we got now, uh, just like today, we have four or five different American, uh, Red Cross groups that want to bring food. I said, okay, we've got one already here with lunch. I said, if someone, another group is supposed to bring dinner, but it's just good to have, have the outpouring of support when we really need it. But the main thing we need to realize is that we can get anything done, no matter how devastating it is, if we work together. We can't get anything done if we're falling apart. Has everybody done everything perfectly? No. Nobody's perfect. But we have learned a lot, you know, and we will continue to grow from that. Do we need to make, um, adjustments? Yes. There are a lot of things that were done that should have been done the way it was, but just like I said, we've never gone through this, uh, before. So it's a learning process. I know a lot of people are aggravated, frustrated, mad, tired. That's all part of it. But we don't need to take it out on each other because we're all feeling the same way. We're all going through the same things in one way or another. So we need to be more considerate of each other. We need to sit down and talk about things rather than making rash decisions. Because that's a lot of what's been going on. You make up your mind and you go and, you know, you go off on this one, that one, or the other, and for no reason particularly. It would be a lot better if you could pull that person aside and try to talk to him. I mean, that's the kind of same, that's the same kind of consideration that you would want others to give to you to give that consideration to them. And so far, like I said, we've had the assistance of the American Red Cross, uh, FEMA, the Manay County Commissioners, private citizens, businesses, and so many others. The storm was devastating and we all have learned, like I said, a valuable lesson that is to work together instead of apart. And if this storm doesn't bring us closer together, then we need to reevaluate our words and our actions. Our volunteer fire department, they have given out day and night, day and night. They have made sure that everybody stayed, uh, had plenty of water, that everybody, they were giving out tarts, they were giving out those MRE meals and things like that. And, uh, the Waymaker Group, they've been stationed here at the community center, giving out, uh, water also, food boxes, tarts, those kits with like toothpastes, toothbrushes, and, and things that you needed and own that you may not have during this time. The American Red Cross, they've been, like I said, they've been constantly feeding us. They've been bringing some water. And they have a mobile unit. It's an industrial sized mobile unit at one of the churches in Swansboro. And what they do, they get together and they cook food there and then they call and see what cities need food and then they would deliver that food to the cities. Uh, the Manay County Commissioners, they have been so, so good to the city of Adrian. Y'all give them a hand. They have made sure that we keep plenty of water. They've sent us tarts. Uh, and I, I need to talk to you about exactly as far as financially, what, uh, they are going to do for us. We have a meeting on Monday, Tuesday this week. They's having, oh, one or two to go right now, but anyway. We had a meeting with the Manay County Board of Commissioners and they told us at that particular time that they had been in touch with FEMA and that, uh, FEMA was going to pay a certain amount toward the cleanup of everything. And, and that particular time at the meeting, they told us it could be like, uh, if FEMA pays ninety percent, then we may have to pay ten. If FEMA pays seventy-five percent, we may have to pay twenty-five percent. So everybody was like, you know, nobody has that kind of money just to write a check, you know, for that, for smaller places, even if some of the bigger ones were saying that. But anyway, we told them that it was to the point where we got to have cleanup, so we just have to do what we got to do. So that's the way we left the meeting after three hours. So anyway, the next day I got a call. They said, I've got two bits of, uh, good information. I said, well, we need some, what you got? And the first thing he said was that the National Guard Armor would be there the next day to start clearing the streets. So that people would be able to go down both sides of the street instead of just the path that we were able to have before. And I said, well, that's great. And he said, cause I know you all don't have the manpower to get a lot done and we've been down there, we see you haven't been able to get a lot done. I said, you're right. So I told him how much we appreciate that. And the next bit of news was, he said that the commissioners had voted and decided to pay the match for the cities. So what that meant was that we were gonna get the streets cleaned up and that it wouldn't cost the taxpayers one red cent. Okay, and, uh, that night also, the contractor from Texas, he was there and he's the one that's gonna be in charge of going around, uh, putting, I mean, going around and getting up the trees and the limbs that you all are gonna put beside the street. And, uh, he said, he, a few things that he went over. He said, first of all, it has to be trees and limbs only. Don't think just because you might be doing renovations that you get a chance to put that material out there. You can't do that. And, uh, he said, and another thing was that they were going to make three to four passes, which means that they're gonna go around three to four times to make sure. Because you know with trees and limbs, it's so bushy, you can only put so much out there at one time. So once they get there, then go and put more out there and until you can get as much as you can, hopefully all of it out of your yards. And another thing he said to make sure that he, that we told everyone was that you don't have to worry about cutting the trees up. Said that they had the equipment, they can pick, dig the whole trees up as long as you can get them beside the road now. They can't go on, uh, property, property. And, uh, he said, uh, that they could go, that they could pick the whole trees up and, and they could, uh, clean it up that way. So you don't have to worry about getting them cut up. If you could, that's fine, but if you cannot, that's fine also. And that was some of the things that he talked about, like I said, and he, uh, hopefully at our meeting Monday, they'll let us know when that they'll get started. Uh, they're gonna get together and do a schedule and let us know at what streets they'll be going down on what days and things like that. So we'll know exactly when they're coming down our streets. So we'll know to make sure that we have as much as we can out there beside the streets so they can get it. Okay? Uh, another, I told you about the contractor. A lot of the churches have been donating food and water. And we appreciate that. We have Dublin and Swansboro, different places coming in, uh, donating food and water. We appreciate that so much. And like I said, the Georgia National Guard was in here clearing the roads. The main emphasis they had was clearing the main highways and the side roads. And they, uh, another thing they told us to make sure we let everyone know that any damages that you had, make sure you take good pictures. And, uh, with FEMA, you have to file your insurance first and keep all your receipts. And then there's a possibility up to forty-two thousand five hundred dollars, a possibility, and I'm not saying it's guaranteed, a possibility that FEMA will reimburse you for all or maybe most of those, uh, things that, that you had to pay for as long as you have receipts. So we're asking all citizens to be patient and, uh, more help is on the way. And like I said, we need to try to work together instead of trying to tear each of a part. That's not helping anybody. Another thing along with FEMA, okay, this is the first part of it, the city and municipality part of the FEMA. There is, after all this is done, but this part has to be done first, what I just talked about. After all this is done, there's an individual, individual assistance through FEMA. That is a portal that you'll be able to go on and soon as we get the information, we'll pass it out to everyone. You can go on and like I said, take good pictures, get quotes, uh, before and after, file your insurance first. Some of the things that may be covered, they're not exactly sure yet, but they said it's a possibility of fuel that you purchase during all of this. Could be purchased like the generators and everything, possible reimbursement for the generators that you bought. And you can claim up to forty-two thousand five hundred dollars with receipts and good pictures now. Uh, and you can claim six hundred dollars for food that's gone bad because a lot of people's refrigerators and freezers and everything, once the lights turn out, they lost all of that, but up to six hundred dollars. Six hundred and fifty dollars for a freezer. And then you could get into the rentals and the business part of it, but he didn't go into details with that right now. But anybody that has those kind of concerns and those kind of, uh, charges, they can explain that better to you. If you go on a portal or you can call FEMA for yourself. But like I said, it's gonna be an online portal that you'll be able to log on to. And, uh, so you can apply for, you know, these things I just told you about on an individual basis. And they said that right now they were looking at, FEMA's looking at something about unemployment where people that were out of work for a certain length of time and I guess become eligible for unemployment, there could be a problem that they're trying to get together to be able to do something with that. Don't know any details or anything right now. The contractor that's gonna be coming around and picking up the, uh, trees and the limbs, his name is Stephen Vinyard. I'm not exactly sure how much he would be like there, you know, it's gonna be people that work for him. And that's on the Manay County side. Now on the Johnson County side right now, uh, contacted Sean Womack's office and I talked to Jessica. She said, right now they're still having to focus on trying to get people cut out so they can get, you know, out from the home, the roads and everything still. A lot of them are still like covered in trees and things like that and they're still trying to get, hold on just a minute, they're still trying to get, uh, the people out. Cause she told me at that particular time, Jessica did, that's who I talked to, Jessica at Sean's office, said that they were, a lot of people were having to walk to the end of the road. She can say how long it was. I'm sure somebody could be, you know, pretty lengthy. And, uh, pick up the supplies from someone else and then walk back to their homes. So they're foc, they're focusing on that right now, making sure everybody's able to get out from their homes. And then they're going to start, uh, that process with FEMA and everything. They're gonna let me know when they have the meetings and as soon as they do, I'll share all of that. So everyone will know, no matter what county you are in, you know, how, uh, that county is going to handle everything and how FEMA will handle it for you. Okay? And like I said, the American Red Cross bringing hot meals, they're bringing, uh, canteen food trucks and, uh, and I got, like I said, I got another meeting with the Manay County Commissioners, uh, Monday at six. Cause we need to go and sign contracts and things like that. And I just want to tell you a little bit about, uh, some of the people that have been helping us. This one guy, he, uh, he, he's not the pilot on the plane, but he's part of a program that go around, it's a small plane and they're going around from place to place. And they deliver materials, supplies, and things like that to different people. They've, uh, brought two loads already to Adrian. This last one, I had to send the guys over in a dump truck, well, a regular truck, that's how much they sent. They said they were trying to get us enough to see if it would last us through the weekend. So I'm talking about specialized baby formula. I'm talking about diapers. I'm talking about wipes, all that for babies. And I'm talking about all kinds of different foods, most especially things that they know people use cereal and, you know, things that they can use if they still don't have wipes. So they have been very, very instrumental in making sure that we get the things that we need. And, uh, like I said, the guys just have been, uh, run over to, uh, the airport of Swansboro and pick it up. So anybody that needs anything, the community center right there, they've got some of everything that you might need, like shampoo, toothpaste, uh, toothbrushes. Jack, no, he's been in the working and he, I can't think of anything that anyone would need that's not in there. Can you, Jack?
It's in there and if we don't have it at that time, if you need it, we take your name and number. If it comes in, we call you and we come.
Yeah.
We've had times when people desperately needed tarts. We were out of tarts.
Right.
We get the tarts in, we call them, and they come. Or drop cords. We didn't have drop cords, we did drop cords. So if we don't have it when you come, if it comes in, that's why we fill out the forms with your names and numbers. Because we, we, we're working hard to be sure we get you what you, what you need.
Yep. And another thing with that is, uh, this guy with the plane and everything, I gave him a list and then he'll ask, are there any special requests? And he's meaning, you know, like one thing that I told him, I said, well, I know that there is a lady that has a baby that has a sensitivity to the regular milk. I said, so there's a special milk that she has to give a baby. And he was asking me about it, so I called her and I asked her. And I, and he said, will you give me her number? I said, yeah, I gave him her number and I called her and let her know he would be calling. So they were able to get her baby some milk, specialized milk. So that's what he's talking about by special request, not the regular, normal, day-to-day things that you would use, but other things that you might lose. So, uh, that's what he was talking about. So anything right now, doing all this that's going on, if there's anything, you know, that we can do, please don't hesitate to pick up the phone and call. Like I said, we're working and trying to get everything that everybody needs. Some of it may take a little bit more time, but, uh, once you call and you ask, you know, and we find out anything, whatever, you know, we'll call you back and let you know what's going on with it. So you'll know if we can get it, when to expect it. And many times we put it in our cars and we try to carry it, you know, to the people if they don't have a way to come and get it. So we just need to all work together to make sure that we are getting through this hard. And it's hard and devastating for everybody for one reason or another, you know? There are a whole lot of things that with the, uh, city that we are going to reevaluate after this storm. We've never had one before. You know, a lot of things were done that shouldn't have been done, a lot of things that were done the way it shouldn't have been done. Like I said, I've talked to some of the, the, the head people of the departments and I've let them know that, uh, things will be reevaluated and, uh, we're gonna do things a little bit different.
Can I ask a question? Do we have an emergency plan set in place in Adrian? That's posted at City Hall or posted anywhere?
We don't have like an emergency plan. What happens, uh, is like when all this came up, we depend on the counties a lot of times for this because, you know, for obvious reasons. They would call us, just like Courtney called me in Manay County and Ropsa did, and they said, I need you to come over.
Miss, with your question, do we have an emergency plan when this stuff go down? This is the emergency plan.
Now, I'm talking about is there-
Everybody help each other.
Yes, I agree.
Just listen, listen. I'm asking your question and I'm not being rude. I don't, I know all y'all, y'all know me and you probably don't know me. But y'all, that's how you live it. Emergency plan, step by step, stone by stone.
I would like to know, sir.
Bit by bit.
I'll take it.
Day by day.
I'll take it.
Dust and snow.
What's protocol? Who to call first?
Yeah.
In case like this, who to call first? If we can't reach you, who to call second, who to call third?
That's the emergency.
The other thing is, do we have a shelter? Do we have a place that if people are displaced, like our neighbors, a tree went on top of their house, they happened to stay there. But do we have a place where people can go if they need to leave their home?
Okay, let me, let me, okay, I'm glad you asked that. Hold on just a minute, Darren, hold on, let me, let me talk.
Everybody not for that.
Well, the, uh, like I said, I went over to the, uh, AOC in the Manay County and we sounded an emergency plan. You know, as far as us having one of the city per se, no. But, uh, another thing, but like I said, that's something right there that we need to look at and do differently next time. Like I said, we've never done this before.
Definitely.
The last part was-
Well, this is actually the second hurricane we've-
Yeah, but this is the worst one.
We've been through another hurricane.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, but listen.
It was the worst. It was the worst.
This is the worst, that's for sure.
Even worse than Katrina.
Y'all, please, everybody, please don't talk at one time, please. We can't, we can't hear anything if everybody talking. But the last part that I want to come, I'm glad you asked, Ellen, because I, I, I don't read Facebook because I don't care what it says, but most of it's lies anyway. But what I, what I, what I, uh, somebody was telling me, that someone put on there that, why don't you open this school for people to get in it? People don't understand. If you don't know what you're talking about, that school's not fit to stand right now, y'all. There is, uh, there's no air in there. And I mean, it's still full of all the equipment that was left in there. It's a lot of, it's dirty, it's got a lot of, got, got a lot of mold in it. But if you don't know what you're talking about, you need to get clarification before you put something out there. Because you put something out there wrong, then the next one take it, they got it wrong and you don't ever get it right.
Well, I'm not talking about that. Like when I went on the, uh, county's page, like Swansboro has churches, it's an emergency shelter. Queen City has churches. Where would our emergency shelter in this town be for people?
That's something that needs to be addressed going forward because I don't think that that's in place currently, but I think that that is something that needs to be addressed going forward for future.
Hold on just a minute, hold on just a minute, hold on, hold on just a minute. What I would like to see-
I don't think that's in place currently.
Hold on just a minute, please. Let me talk a minute. What I would like to see put in place is a common place is that community center right now. And that would be a place that you could put carts in, you can move the chairs out of the way, put carts in. But like you said, we need to get a plan like that together. So in the event of something happening again, we know who to call first, who to call second, and where we can go if we need a shelter. That's what I want to say. Thank you.
If I may, I have a couple of questions or a couple of tidbits. Um, I know you've spoken to the Red Cross today. I got a phone call from them just a few moments ago. It's on my Facebook page. Now they are en route currently. We'll be here about seven to seven thirty with food. Uh, so they, they're en route while they called me. I had no idea. But, uh, but anyway, um, this community's come together and I, I don't think we can thank the fire department enough for what they have done. They have been here around the clock. They, they have been here around the clock. And, and as I, as you said earlier, there are some things that are gonna need to be looked at and, and questions that need to be asked and why things went the way that they went. Um, the first three days of this hurricane, uh, we have law enforcement here now. I see from three different jurisdictions, law enforcement here now. But there were no law enforcement here when we needed them. Uh, they're here for protection now, supposedly, but where was the law enforcement from the one? All day Friday, all day Saturday, all day Sunday. They may have run a call in the middle of the night. But there should have been a law enforcement presence in this town from day one, from the get-go, from the very outset, at the end. I know the fire department was pushing trees out of the road a mile outside of town because they came by my house to do it. I'm a business owner here in town and I have, uh, been talking to people from all over the state. Uh, had a man in my store earlier, he's a feed rep of mine. He's from Homerville, Georgia. Homerville, Georgia, there's been several businesses there that, uh, that have been looted. Um, the city's been put under a curfew because of it. There's been, see, other, several other cities and municipalities in our area that, that have been done the same way. And I feel like with, with a, with a police presence from the very outset, then this, thankfully, our citizens didn't do that. And I think, I think we've got a better class of citizens than to do that. But it could have easily happened. It could have happened by someone outside of town coming in or what have you. But I think that needs to be some very, some very hard questions asked as to where the police was. I know where a couple of them were, but-
Young man, young man.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can you respect me to finish speaking, please?
Okay, I'm a rebut, I'm a rebut.
That's fine.
Okay.
But I'm a business owner here in town. I've been here myself basically around the clock and I don't want to pat on the back from anyone. It's what we're supposed to do.
And you know, we all respect that.
Sir, I'm, I'm not done. Can I finish, please? But I think that that needs to be found out as to where our head of our, the police department was from the very outset. Uh, i- if there are other agency issues there where other, other towns or other counties are the priority, then maybe we need to rethink where we are as far as that goes. Um, but I, I, I'm with you, Mayor. We need to commend people from all over the country for coming to help our city, to help our town. Um, I, I, I think the fire department needs to basically for, for the next foreseeable future, get whatever they need, whatever they ask for. Just when they ask for a check, ask them how much to write it for. But, uh, there, there, there are some things that, that really need to be changed and there's no way to have a plan in place for something like this. Um, but we, all we can do is try. That's all, all we can do. There, there's no preparing for something like this. We're two hundred and fifty miles from the coast. How is there a plan in place for a category two hurricane?
Nobody plans for that.
But there are, there are some things that need to be changed or, or investigation. But we are getting outside help. Uh, the National Guard is supposed to be handing out the, the stuff with the fire department now. Uh, going forward, they're supposed to be manning that post from, from here on.
I know everybody has just, it's been amazing to watch the citizens pull together and I'm very grateful for that. I would ask the mayor and I would ask the council, I know everybody is busy and I know you have no respect for Facebook and I understand, I'm one of those people too. However, your citizens need to know what's going on and that's the only way we have in keeping in touch. We couldn't get anybody at City Hall. So there are three web, three Facebook pages for Adrian and we have the city page. If you can make it a commitment, I'm talking about today and going forward so that we know tomorrow what's going on and the day after.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I have noticed and I'm grateful that that communication is gonna go a long way because we're a long way to go. We still have people in Adrian who don't have electricity on and there's people that didn't know there was a meeting tonight. And part of that is word of mouth and we're out there doing it, but we've really got to find a way just to get the word out to everybody. And we can work on a plan. Unlike you, gotta have a plan, but today is the day to do that. Today is the day to help people.
Yes, it is right.
And do we have any word on when our water will be finished being tested so we don't have to boil it?
It's all right. We just, you know, represent, yes.
Clap for the passed out. Woo-hoo, good. We can, you, drink our water now.
Make some tea with it.
Yeah, if that you want.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Lord, thank you, Lord.
Judy Gorman. Come on, girl. What you got, girl?
Uh, I know I've been told that the sign in the company was on the emergency management system as far as warnings. When did the sirens go off on our side? Once, and once something, when that storm turned from going to make it and turned this way, when did that emergency sign go off on the Red Cross?
Was it still up and running?
It just did before the rust flew off at my house.
I know that sign went down. I'm not sure.
I know it went down, but it's-
What about the code red? Did you get anything on code red? Did you get anything on that either?
No.
Okay, we need to address that.
And I was in the garage till I got so damn frightened, I went to the hall.
I understand because remember when we signed up for the code red, they told us that that was, they didn't use it.
Sirens would go off on the electronic side.
Okay, thank you for bringing the, Suzanne, what's she at, right here? I'm sorry. Were you looking to them to see? See, these are the things that we're talking about that we need to work on. We are.
Got many residents in this town knew that that sign was supposed to be registered with the emergency signal plan. If a tornado or any climate weather is headed this way, that sign is supposed to go off.
Is registered, is it? I'm not sure. You just, just check on it a little bit. It's like many other-
It is a free service. It's nothing that taxpayers have to pay.
Right, 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 right. Just like, like I said, the law is saying you need to sit down and make a list and jump around here. And I already talked about it, Jennifer and Amber and I, sitting out a list of things that we need to work on to prove, not just at the city hall, the other departments. So everybody can do their job more effectively. Yep.
Does anybody have a satellite phone in the city that in case, like we were all without cell? My daughter and my family from three different states tried constantly calling the police and nobody answered and everything. Does anybody have a satellite phone that they can get out in case none of us can get through?
The cricket phones never went down.
Did you mail one?
Cricket? Cricket phones never went down.
Wow. Cricket phones in?
The people that had cricket had to stop it. Yeah.
Cricket is through what?
Verizon did.
So you have something to come up with?
Verizon.
Straight up? Okay, okay, gotcha. Okay, okay, yeah.
Thanks, thanks, my goodness. People talking about, yeah, I'll be, I'll be-
But there is, yeah.
People talking about there.
And we had-
We got a lot of other people here, and I'm not gonna get y'all from Texas. I wrote a line, and then, there was a big tree, I mean, big, you know, I mean, you said that they're gonna take out the limbs, they can't go on private property.
Also, we're gonna have to stick together, the whole thing, yeah.
Oh, very good.
Some of the people are gonna say, you, you know, you got a tree, I have all of them, you know what I'm saying? They'll do something, when you give permission about this, people love the city. So that's the reason. But one thing about a lot of the companies that I've talked to, the other places, they're only going to be up there, uh, over the sea across. Like, no, we're not gonna do that, this is the chance, you know, we got citizens on that. They've been through this devastation, they got a whole lot of things in their yard, and they should be given a chance to get their yards cleaned up, and that's, that's how it works. You don't grow, you can move it where I tell you, like I said, I'm not serious, you can't move them. Yeah, I know.
Why, Nola?
Who was that all about?
Um, I, I'm not taking anything from the fire department, y'all have been awesome, all the amount, I mean, just awesome, awesome, but-
Hold on just a minute, let's hear Del's questions, y'all hold just a minute.
I, I, I just want to say, I, I'm not taking anything from the fire department, because they have been awesome, I, I'm, I'm just amazed at them, they've been awesome, and they, they've took from their families, and I, the wives are to be commended for giving up time to families. You know, I told you, I, I've been in your shoes. Been there, done that, but let's don't forget that there are some citizens also that have given up time with their families.
Yes.
That's not on the fire department.
I agree.
That have also done the same.
I agree.
That have given up time with their families, they've been away from their families, they've spent their gas, they've used their equipment, they've used their energy and their time to also cut trees out of the roads, and use their bulldozers, and, and their stuff, and, and all, to get out here and clear roads, when we should have had city workers that were mandatory to be out here on Friday, to be clearing, help clear these streets, and, and I think that's something that we could do better at next time.
We can, we gotta get better equipment too, because we don't have any.
Uh, city workers should have been mandatory to be here Friday to help clear these streets. We should have had city workers working Friday and Saturday, helping the fire department, and helping these city workers, these, these citizens that volunteered their time to be out here trying to, if, if the citizens and the fire department hadn't got out here and cleared these streets, we, we'd have been blocked in, because you couldn't even leave my house.
For four thirty.
To go anywhere.
You can't even get out of Adrian.
And, and the city workers, it should have been mandatory that they be out here trying to help us clear these streets. The, the police chief of Adrian, if, if he can't prioritize Adrian as a prior to, priority, then he don't need to be police chief of Adrian. If Sopetown is gonna be his priority, and answering calls in Sopetown, in Truqueland County, if that's gonna be his priority, then he needs to go on to Truqueland County and stay down there.
I agree.
He don't need to be the police chief in Adrian. Bring anybody, anybody that's gonna be the police chief of Adrian. Adrian needs to be their priority, and they certainly don't need to be driving the Adrian police vehicle, answering freaking calls in Truqueland County. That's my tax money that paid for that vehicle.
Nope.
My tax money paid for that vehicle.
Oh, that's not true, Del, oh, that's not true.
Wait a minute now, my, my money paid for that vehicle.
Absolutely, yes, but I said all that what you're saying, so.
Okay, well, it's not true, why not, it's like, it's not true.
We're not gonna take the, you can come to the office, and we'll sit down with my-
No.
No, it's a city meeting, we wanna know the answer.
We wanna know, we wanna know, we wanna know, we have a right to know.
Hold on just a minute, I, this, the purpose of this meeting is to share information. Whatever, y'all can laugh about it, or whatever, but I tell you one thing right now, we're not here to bash anybody.
I'm not bashing nobody, why not, but I'm telling you.
It ain't bashing, it's accountability.
Answering calls in Truqueland County. Meeting with anyone.
Now, the meet's over that you had your talk.
Well, now the meet is over, because there's gonna be no bashing.
There ain't no bashing, it's for sure.
So you say, so you say.
Oh, it is.
Whatever, whatever.
No, whatever, come on, let's finish your meeting there.
Please say, say, why not?
I kept cool, y'all know how I feel.
Why, Nola?
Come on, hold on, the meeting-
I'll start meeting.
Come on.
Come on.
She go the way say.
Come on.
I'm not doing no harm.
Look at.
Some information with y'all.
Look at, look at.
And, and there's nothing about seeing you that's, that's, that's all.
Yeah, see, I'm- You can't get the truth.
No, and it's blind in the face. Somebody needs to run again, even with proof to show.
Let's calm down, listeners.
We should be heard, though.
Anybody needs any assistance or anything like that, as far as parks, water, uh, food, uh, ice and all, I, I'm not sure, I'm not-
I've got, I've got twenty cases.
Okay, there's also, behind the high school at Johnson County, we not turn anybody away, you just drive around back, drive through there. We got talks in, uh, got ice, got water, uh, they were, uh, discussing food today, some organization was there cooking food. They're not gonna turn anybody away, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, or anything like that. Uh, somebody mentioned disaster assistance from, from Rick Allen's office, disasterassistance.gov is the website. If anybody ever want to go on there and, and fill out an application or whatever, disasterassistance.gov, or there's a number to call, it's, uh, one-eight-hundred-six-two-one, about three-three-six-two, one-eight-hundred-six-two-one-three-three-six-two, if you want to do it by phone. But they, they do require that, if you own, have a homeowner's policy, that you file it on your homeowner's first, make sure to keep all your receipts just like you-